Get the agenda all pulled up and we'll get going. Okay. Good morning, this is the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August 18th. I am the Chair, Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair and Commissioner Rick Vest and Commissioners Deb Shore, Commissioner Roma Amundson, and Commissioner Krista Yocum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Corey, will you please begin?
Yes, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster ani.gov. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020.
I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item number two is approval of all claims processed through August 18th, 2020, and I would offer for consideration an amendment to include the payroll information for the pay period ending August 12th, 2020.
Move approval of the claims with the amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next, under new business, we have a resolution in the matter of approving the appointment of Patricia D Lopez as Health Director of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, or Department of Health, excuse me.
Good to have you with us, Mayor.
Thank you, it's nice to be here. Good morning, Chair Flowerday and Commissioners. I'm here to offer the nomination of Pat Lopez as the Permanent Health Director. As you know, she's been leading our Health Department with expertise and incredible excellence for over a year now as an interim director, and we're here to formalize the nature of her appointment. And what I guess I just want to say in sort of reaction to what we've heard so far, that this is a time of great uncertainty. Many people are feeling very unsettled, abended even, and it's it's natural to feel that way. So many of us have had so much of our lives disrupted and we don't know when the pandemic will end. But we do know some of the key strategies to mitigate its impact on our lives that can help us stay safe and to help us reopen our economy, and that's what our Health Department has been focused on. That's what Pat Lopez has been focused on from day one, and I fully support her leadership and her expertise and the nature with which she has been convening across our community to work with others to make that network of safety and support and advancement of progress possible. It's a time because things are so uncertain that we all need to be offering each other a lot of grace, recognizing that there's fear but not giving into that fear. Continue to follow the advice of our public health experts like Pat Lopez and to work together to get through these uncertain times. I'm proud to serve alongside Ms. Lopez and would respectfully ask your confirmation of her today as our Permanent Health Director. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. Any other staff here to speak on this? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? It's not a public hearing, but because of the public attention here, we'll go ahead and allow people to comment on new business as normal. We are going to do a five-minute time limit, just see your way, Robert.
Thank you very much. My name's Robert Way, 801 Elavado Avenue, Lincoln, Nebraska. I listened to comments on this matter yesterday from my fellow citizens, and I thought about it last night. And what I came up with is something that's not normally how we like to deal with things. It seems at this point, we're not dealing with right or wrong, but a range of bad. Bad things are happening, and we want to have the least amount of bad things happening with the least amount of disruption. The range of bad, as I understand it, and I can't, these are just the numbers I believe are right, they seem to be changing quite quickly, is New Jersey has had 1,804 deaths per million, but New Jersey's not a lot like us. Indiana, which is more like us, has had 466 deaths per million. We are at 187 deaths per million as a state. And Iowa, which is also, I bring up because they're similar to us, is at 113 deaths per million. Obviously, one death is too much, but we're not in an ideal world. We're trying to make the best of the situation we face together as a community, and as a community, those measures should be reviewed, and I'm glad they are being reviewed. The least bad option is something which you employ when it's impossible to know with a moral certainty, even a scientific certainty, all the factors involved in a situation that's ever evolving. I'm not going to pretend I know, have the education or qualifications to speak on any of the science in this matter, but it seems like even really smart people are slightly confused. So what choice should we adopt? Lacking certainty, I think we should choose the least bad option. The subject which seems to be under most debate at the moment is masks. If we wear masks, what's the worst thing that can happen as opposed to not wearing masks? At the moment, as a citizen, who's already stated, I'm glad I'm not in charge, the, I think the least bad option is wearing masks, because it has the least downside risks. And I thank you for your time. Is there any questions?
Thanks, Laura. Any other, anyone else here to speak on this?
I would move that we approve the nomination of Pat Lopez.
Second, Dr. D.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
If I could just add a comment, we received a letter from Dr. John Schwartz, who's Superintendent of Norris Public Schools, and I just would like to read just a couple comments into the record, and again, these are Dr. Schwartz's words. "I've witnessed Director Lopez's leadership extend beyond Lancaster County. Norris School District is uniquely positioned to work with multiple public health districts in Nebraska due to our geographic boundaries and because of our collaboration with other schools in the district. In these settings, we regularly hear from other public health directors besides Director Lopez. These interactions have helped me to see that Director Lopez is not only leading Lancaster County effectively, but is helping to provide structure and create consistency across the entire state of Nebraska. In short, Director Lopez is a leader among other public health leaders. Director Lopez possesses the dispositional qualities of a strong leader. She balances courage, restraint, confidence, humility, and poise. She has a steady and predictable demeanor. Most importantly, her actions are consistent with that of a service-oriented leader who is dedicated to her community." I couldn't think of any better words to speak on behalf of Pat.
Commissioners, if I might note, sorry, Commissioner Vest, but I do want to get on the record that the Clerk's Office has received a number of letters and emails in support, opposition, or in a neutral position for this appointment, and those documents will remain on file in the County Clerk's Office.
Thank you. Our community is absolutely safer today because of Pat Lopez. There is not a doubt in my mind that she has literally saved lives through her leadership in this, literally. More people are alive in our community today and healthier in our community today because of the leadership of Director Lopez, and I don't think, you do not doubt that fact.
I just want to add onto that, I agree totally with Commissioner Flowerday, but, and appreciate the other comments here today, but I also like the fact that we're in a community that is moving in the right direction. Right now, our children are in school. Going back to my, one of my areas of concern, my granddaughter is starting her senior year of softball with a game this Thursday. Our small businesses are open with appropriate precautions, and I know that we have authorized 44 events of over five, where over 500 people can attend. We're moving in the right direction, I deeply appreciate that, and to say that I attribute so much of that to the leadership of Pat Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's been Pat Lopez's steady and strategic leadership that's kept the community spread down in Lancaster County, and her solid and unwavering dedication to the people of this community should never be questioned. I've known Pat for more than 20 years, going back to a neighborhood project in Northwest Lincoln that was to advance parenting skills and healthy living, work readiness, and help low-income community members build connections to the school and to their community, and so I know that she has built her career to have the skills to handle this moment, and she's built her career dedicated to the public health based on evidence and data and concern for the people of this city, this county, and this state. And so I have the utmost faith in her service and guidance during this pandemic, and I look forward to casting my vote.
Well, I'll be the last one to speak, and actually, I've talked about this before earlier, and I've said, you know, the, when the COVID pandemic hit, everybody was kind of not knowing what was going to do, what, nobody knew what was going to happen, what we should do or anything like that, and Pat really stepped in, and what she did was is to provide a calm demeanor, steadiness, as you mentioned, in the face of an emergency. And she was professional at all times, and I think that there's two things that I really have to characterize her with. She has a great deal of personal courage to come out and to do many of the things that she did, and to, and she has a great deal of integrity. The care and concern that she has for the citizens of Lincoln as well as Lancaster County is paramount in her mind, and I think that she is just a, this would be a wonderful nomination, and I fully support it.
Yeah, no question. Yeah, you know what, I think that's a great idea. Can we get a round of applause for Pat Lopez? Unless there's any further discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. The next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding the sale of property generally located at 6,700 Hickman Road, legally described herein and located in the city of Hickman, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
This resolution is really just to clean up the process. The title company has asked that we have several closing documents executed. Instead of amending all their documents, we have a resolution authorizing the Chair to sign all those documents, and then also authorizing me as a chief administrative officer to sign any additional documentation that might be needed the day of closing. So that's, this is really just a housekeeping matter to make sure we keep this, keep this sale going. It's scheduled to close at the end of the month.
Pam Dimble, Lancaster County Engineer. So as we look at these documents, I think it's also important for me to say one more time that this is a building located in Hickman. It is entirely in the floodplain. It does not have sewer or water services, therefore it does not have a bathroom, and we are not able to improve this building, to upgrade it to modern standards, and so therefore, we did negotiate with Hickman for a new state statute to sell this building to the Hickman community, the city of Hickman.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item C is a resolution authorizing the installation of traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
Pam Dimble, Lancaster County Engineer. So what I've added to the overhead is, is, is an exhibit denoting a mile, about a mile and a half south of Saltillo on South 54th Street will be reducing the speed to 45 miles an hour. What's going to happen here come Wednesday is a temporary traffic light is going to be put up in both directions, and the state for the South Beltway project is going to begin running scrapers over this corridor, and so, in groups of probably somewhere around 20. So as this happens, in order for the anticipation of the light, we went ahead and extended the 45 mile an hour speed limit down to this location, and then once we get past the intersection of 54th and Roca, we go ahead and restore the speed limit to 55 miles an hour for the paved road. This is anticipated to, to be, have this light in place through next June, and so once again, we're concerned for the safety of the citizens in this corridor, and so I do appreciate that Commissioner Shore met, and my staff met with Nebraska's Department Transportation Staff and the contractors in order to come up with this solution last week.
And they are, the, the lights were going to be manually operated during daylight hours.
So the lights will have a plunger, they will not be on a timer, and what will happen is there'll be an employee that will have a switch, and so the light will be red when the equipment is rolling through, and then it will turn green when, when traffic is being allowed through. In the evening, it will be flashing yellow, and then there will also be several plates placed over the road in order to preserve the road. The road, of course, changes in elevation dramatically in the future with construction of the Beltway, so this section of road will be removed, but of course, at county engineering, what we want to ensure is when they stop taking traffic across that road and then open it back up before doing that grading, that the road is still in good condition for our residents to use. So a lot of closure going on in the south end of the county, a lot of detours. I just wish to dash to the public, that you check the NDOT site, that you check the Lancaster County Road Closure site, as well as follow Your Ways app if you're trying to navigate around South Lancaster County.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm being told that we are having a technological issue. Jamie, can you confirm, is the live stream up? I'm getting text messages saying that we are not on live stream right now. We'll come back.
Since nine o'clock, or is it?
I just suddenly started receiving text messages from our friends at the Journal Star asking if the meeting was delayed.
Interesting.
Hang with us all here.
We're live on Facebook and on the TV channel, but YouTube is down.
YouTube is down. Got it, thank you.
Make that announcement, Sean, in case they missed it.
Yep, just in case anyone missed it, we, we are live on the television channel and on Facebook, but the YouTube is down currently. Okay, excuse that interruption, I'm alerting them right now. Okay, sorry, let's go ahead and continue.
I would move approval of the resolution involving traffic control devices.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest. Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 3D is an agreement with Gana Trucking and Excavating Inc. to provide road maintenance of certain county roads pertaining to special permit 20014. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 3E is a contract with Zell LLC to evaluate and analyze the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office's current recruiting strategy and process, and to create a marketing plan for execution, the cost to the county is $12,500.
I just wanted to let you know we had inadvertently left off Attachment A. That's been given to the clerk, it had the scope of services, so it's complete and full now.
Thank you.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
We do have Chief Deputy Duncan here.
Apparently you're getting called up.
Let's let them say their piece.
I guess we, we just ask you to describe the contract, the scope of it, and what it entails.
Yep, I'm Sergeant Drew Bolzer with Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. I work within our personal, our professional standards division, which is the division that handles our hiring and recruiting. At this point, we are just looking at the contract with Zell to work with us on new recruiting strategy and marketing initiatives, and that being said, this money has already been approved with federal, or FAC funds, so it would be no cost to the county.
Okay, I move approval.
No, we appreciate your efforts, you know, given the way the world is right now, this seems like a step in the right direction, and of course, our experience with Zell was very positive.
Thank you, we appreciate the board's support. Sergeant Bolzer is sharing with me, nationwide recruiting numbers are down by about 47% over the last couple of years, and the local trends are similar to that here. We've really struggled to get a good number of qualified applicants in here, and one area that is of particular focus with this partnership with Zell is finding ways to increase the diversity of our applicant pool too, not just the numbers, but the number of talented, diverse candidates, something we've really tried to work hard on. And just from a lingo translation, the FAC is our Forfeited Assets Committee, so the funds that we're using to pay for this partnership with Zell for our recruiting strategy are being paid for with forfeited assets, and so there's no ca, no cost to the taxpayer on this. We would answer any questions if the board has any, but otherwise, we're just seeking your support.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you being so proactive and finding a kind of a, a new path to recruit.
It's not getting any easier, that's for sure. Right, right. Okay, well, I think we already have a motion from Commissioner Amundson.
Well, actually, I think it was.
Yeah, Commissioner Shore made the motion.
Commissioner Shore made the motion.
Amundson.
And then I made a second motion.
She made a second.
So I mean, I tell you what, we are fully.
I think we're supportive here.
I'll second the second.
All right, you can figure that out. There's consensus. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's been a request to hold item 3F for one week, so we'll move on to item 3G, which is a special events permit application from Ben Cohoon for the Market-to-Market Relay on October 3rd, 2020.
Hello. I'm Ben Cohoon. I guess I can answer any questions that you guys might have.
It's always nice to hear just a small summary of your event, Ben, if you could just give us the.
Yeah, so this is the 13th year of this event, is a team-running relay from Omaha to Lincoln. This year, we are, we've worked with the Health Department quite a bit and looked at how to spread out the event a little bit more, so we were reducing the length in, to Bellevue to downtown Lincoln, and a team has six, seven, or eight runners, and they take about three or five miles of a run, and then their team vehicle leapfrogs ahead of them. So this has been something the community's done for a long time, and it's grown to actually the largest event of its type in the nation, so it is something unique that Nebraska has an opportunity to have something that is the biggest of its kind.
Great, great.
Well, sure, my daughter's run with the same group of people now for five or six years, and I always, you know, leapfrog, and it's, it's just, it's a great day, you know, you see the same faces that you'd stop, and we're all in a little line of cars going to the next checkpoint and cheering the runners on, and scenery is always beautiful, it's just a great time of year, and you guys put together an excellent event.
Thank you.
I would move approval. I would move approval.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just add, thank you for taking initiative to put this on again. It's great that we're continuing to have events like this.
Yeah, we're happy that it's been, you know, like everyone that's in a small business or in your guys' seat, it's been more work than you anticipated. But we're happy that we're able to put it on with additional, you know, health things that we're putting in place. So, we're happy we got it approved from the health departments that we go through. And I know the runners will be very excited to be out there once again.
Very good. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item three H is a special designated license application from Sisostres Shrine for an event at 1050 Saltillo Road on September 26, 2020.
Good morning. Dan Bowlen, Office Manager of Sisostres Shrine. Questions or concerns on our event?
How many years have you done this?
The car show, we've done several years. This year, we had to cancel it because of the pandemic. So, we're trying to just get a fundraiser. We're having the devan ladies are serving a meal. We're having people with special cars, fancy cars come out. We're not judging, we're just going to have fun. We have a DJ, just to have a good time. Get people out there and have fun.
And we need that. We need that. I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next are consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner, any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items include the approval of the following. A utility permit number 2011 allowing Windstream to replace a communication cable from the intersection of Hickman Road and South 25th Street to 2100 South 25th Street. There is no cost to the county. Amendments to the following grant contracts. C-19-0502 with Hope Spoke for the Pilots of Change Program. C-19-0406 with Hope Spoke for the Outpatient Service Program. And C-19-0638 with Clyde Malone Community Center for the Take Pause Program. We have grant contracts with the following. The Asian Community and Cultural Center for the Serving Immigrant and Refugee Youth Program in the amount of $48,500. And the Boys and Girls Club of Lincoln Lancaster County for the Great Futures Initiative Program in the amount of $24,390. Amendments to the following county contracts. C-20-0196 with subsidiaries of Enterprise Holdings, Inc. set forth on Schedule One of the Master Agreement for Nationwide Car Rental. And C-19-0246 with O'Reilly Auto Enterprises, LLC, doing business as O'Reilly Auto Parts for fleet service parts and equipment. C-19-0508 with Manelli Wagner and Associates, Inc. for additional structural consultation services related to bridges in Lancaster County, Nebraska. And C-18-0288 with Encompass for the annual supply of office seating. We have change order number one to county contract C-20-0396 with Tim Cisco Construction, LLC, due to a discrepancy in the bid responses of Part III Q-12, which was not awarded with the original contract. Rightaway contract with Mildred Swoboda Trust, Southwest 100th Street and West Whitstruck Road in the amount of $325. Received and placed on file the following. County Clerk July 2020 report, Records and Information Management July 2020 report, and County Engineer 2020 quarterly reports. And finally, we have setting a public hearing on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. regarding the Lancaster County's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item number five is an update on COVID-19 and Lancaster County response.
Does anyone have anything on the COVID-19 update or response? I do not. Okay, let's go ahead and move down to public comment.
Public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Are there any members of the public here to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, let's move to announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, August 20th, 2020, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
I move adjourn. Second?
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Next up is the, go ahead and convene the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. The first item of the agenda is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, August 4th, 2020.
Move approval? Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls? I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next are 2020 late filing homestead exemptions for the following. Frederick Allen Jr., Diane Katz, Alice Jean Baker, Kathleen Baderman, Deborah Bell, Thomas and Leslie Bill, Tony Bauer, Sue Ann Bussing, Margaret Cocker, Louis Metulka, Karen Mosher, Cheryl Droude, Stephen Martin, Carol Gross, Zaneta Gutierrez, Bonnie Hartwig, Carol Heng, Mavis Hettenbaugh, Shirley Hinkle, Eleanor Kobza, Grace Williams, Robert and Glenda Kai, Diane Aris, Russell and Lori Holland, Kenneth and Janet Lell, Lovely Mary Surrender, Patricia Mahoney, Thomas and Pearly Currie, Stanley and Roberta Dingus, Donald and Cheryl McKinney, Henry and Patricia Meinke, Elizabeth Morgan, Jacqueline and Toni Fleming, Patrick and Susan Murphy, Constance Zimmer, Ivan Pettit, John and Michael Planbeck, Russell and Susan Taylor, Joseph and Cheryl Swartz, Bernadine Stransky, Gisella Roselle, Fay Winter, Terri Schmidt, Shelley Schultz, Michael Shapaville, George Sitzman, Sally Spear, Corinne Slickschul, John Stewart, Randall Strope, James Ross, Karen Ramsdell, Leonard Thomas, Dennis Vesely, Joellen Tiller, Evelyn Tubbs, Martha Rivet, Doris Paulson, Karen Wackenshaw, Teda Watts, Joan West, and Gary Will.
Very good. Good morning. Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Register of Deeds. These are applicants who missed the June 30th filing deadline for homestead exemptions, but did apply and request relief by July 20th. Statute allows them to do that and have the board approve them as long as they're not doing it in consecutive years. So, we're recommending approval of all of these late applications. And as you can imagine, with COVID, it was quite a challenge getting all these people to jump through the hoops they needed to. So, strongly recommend we approve these.
I move we approve these homestead exemptions.
I'll second. And thanks to your team that reaches out to all these people individually and helps them with the paperwork and reminds them of deadlines. It's really a very hands-on process.
As somebody said, it's one of the things that we get to do something positive for the taxpayers. So, they appreciate it and thank you. I will pass that along.
Absolutely. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item four is an appeal of reassessment value for destroyed real property for Inland Insurance Company.
Good morning. Excuse me, my name is Shannon Doring. I'm here on behalf of Inland Insurance Company. As you know, I was here two weeks ago. This is an appeal of a Form 425 protest that was filed. And the way the statutory procedures are set up, the first round of appeal is to bring it back to the Board of Equalization to allow it to remedy any mistakes that may have been made. And with all due respect, there were several. The first is, this board flipped the statute on its head when it denied the protest. If you review Sections 13, 77, 1307 to 1309, the way the procedure works is the county assessor shall grant the relief, and this board shall approve it when a property owner files a report that property has been destroyed and damaged under the statute. The legislature was clear to remove the discretion. And ironically, many of you and even Deputy County Attorney says this was not unsympathetic to the taxpayers' condition, but there's really nothing you can do here. And the good news is that there is. 77, 1309 says if a property owner files a report indicating the property is damaged, the assessor shall grant the relief, or excuse me, the board shall grant the relief, and the assessor appeals from that determination. If you review the comments that led to the passage of this legislation, on April 5th, 2019, Senator Lenahan pointed out that several county assessors showed up, testified in front of the legislature, and commented by letter to say, "There's nothing we can do if, as of 1201 on January 1st, the property was there and it subsequently destroyed. We must collect taxes for the entire year." This statute changes that procedure. It changes the procedure pursuant to which these types of damaged property claims are handled. The assessor had no discretion, and with all due respect, the board had no discretion other than to grant the relief requested in the protest and prorate the taxes. After that is done, the assessor can appeal, and the assessor bears the burden to show that the property is not within the definitions of the statute. We were here last time. There was some discussion that the statute implies that it must be a natural disaster. With all due respect to Mr. Zig, who made that comment, and the board who ratified it, statute doesn't imply that at all. The statute specifically says in 77, 1307, subsection two, sub subsection B, that if the destroyed real property, the destroyed real property covered by this statute does not include damage that's caused by the owner. In other words, if property damage is caused by somebody other than the owner, it's intended to be covered in this statute. The inclusion of the word "other" "natural disaster" in the definition of a calamity means that it could be another natural disaster other than the four things that are delineated. Natural defines things that could also be included. The list specifically says, including but not limited to, a fire, a flood, a tornado, an earthquake, or other natural disaster. The legislative history, to the extent you need it, and I would submit that you don't, would bear out that anything outside the control of the owner is intended to be covered in this statute. I brought a letter from the drafter and a picture that I realized that we did not submit. I don't believe, and I can't speak for him, I don't believe Mr. Zig is going to stand up here and say this wasn't destroyed by a fire. But to the extent that comment is going to be made, I wanted to make the record clear. There's a great picture that was published in the Journal Star on May 31st that shows the front door of the building with a fire starting behind the receptionist desk. So, the inquiry that remains is whether this was destroyed real property and there was, as defined by the statute, significant property damage. That's the easy question. Significant property damage means that the value of the property after the calamity is less than, or it's more than 20% of the value before the property. And as I indicated last time, this property has been completely destroyed. The windows are boarded up, the tenants have been displaced, it's absolutely useless. It's standing there now, waiting for other inquiries in regard to what happened to be resolved. And once those are resolved, the building will be destroyed, and it will become a vacant lot, at least temporarily. The question of whether this was a calamity within the statute, the text is clear. It says, "A fire, a flood, a tornado, an earthquake, or other natural disaster." Two of those first four things can occur without a natural disaster. Obviously, a fire can be set by, in this case, at least they've been declared peaceful protesters. I think Mr. Zig called them criminals, and there's been a lot of debate over what that classification should be. But more importantly, it could have been an electrical short. It could have been anything. As the letter from Senator Erdman says, ironically, he drafted the statute because of his duties on a county board, the assessor came to him with an elderly lady who had her house burnt down by an electrical short. If the, and that, as he calls in the letter, should have been a no-brainer. But because the statutory scheme in Nebraska called for the assessment of property as of midnight, or 1201, if you will, on January 1st, there was nothing the assessors could do. In this case, there is something that can be done. It's, the statutory scheme is relatively clear, and it's not that complex. If property is destroyed, the tax assessment should be prorated to the date of the damage if the threshold in the statute is met, and it is here. So, we would respectfully request that you reconsider the statutes as they're written and reconsider the interpretation that we would submit is somewhat of a contortion of the statutory text. There's a specific exception, especially applicable here, that if the damage that results in the diminution of the value was caused by the owner, then it's clearly damage that's not intended to be addressed. It does not say if it's damaged caused by anything other than a natural disaster, it should be excluded from the statute. The text is not ambiguous, and to the extent it is, the structure of the statute, if it implies anything, implies that peaceful protesters who burned down a building do not exempt the damage from the destroyed property statute. And we would respectfully submit, unless there are any questions, that the board reconsider its prior decision and grant the relief requested as the statute specifically says it should have the first time.
Dan, would you mind coming up here for a second?
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Doring did reach out to me, I believe it was last week, asking, raising some issues he brought forth to you today. And I told him I would consider them. After speaking with several attorneys in our office and outside our office, I haven't found any that read the statute the way that he does or Senator Erdman does. I'm not going to sit up here and want to litigate this whole issue in front of you guys on how this is to be interpreted. Again, I believe that's best left to Turk, and so my position has not changed. I would recommend that you deny this.
The question was raised earlier that it should be the county assessor that's bringing this forward. I guess I'm confused about that. And then, what the next steps would be? I mean, say we were to just overturn it, then what would be the next step?
Well, that's kind of the problem with how they're interpreting it. As you read the whole statute, it says that the County Board of Equalization receives a report of destroyed real property. And that's the question, is this a report of destroyed real property? And that's where we're arguing, is whether or not this fits within the definition of calamity. So, if we don't receive that report, then how can we take action on it? Secondly, ignores subsection two in there, which says, "Any action to the county board which changes the assessed value." So, then that leaves it open to the county board can deny it. No one's reading it the way that they are, is they're picking and choosing what parts they want to apply. And it seems odd that you could have someone file one of these reports of destroyed property. It's totally fraudulent. And the Board of Equalization has no option. You have to approve it. And then, you put the burden on the assessor to come back here and change your mind. That doesn't make much sense. What they may have intended to write and what they wrote are two different things. Words have meanings. And the words in this case make it very clear that this case does not fall within the definition of fire. So, again, our recommendation is that you deny it at this time.
And if we deny today, there's another level of appeal available?
They have the option of proceeding on to Turk.
I move that we deny.
May I address one thing that was said?
Yes.
The, in regard to the fraudulent report, that's what the second level of appeal back to the same body is for. The discretion is removed at the first level. The statute that Mr. Zig is referring to is 1308. Read 1309. It says, "Once it's received, the Board of Equalization shall adjust the assessed value to its assessed value on the date it suffers significant property damage." If there's an issue, the assessor brings it back to this board for reconsideration. At that point, if there was a fraudulent report filed, they'd done their investigation, they could have the evidence of the property still exists or it's a valuation question. All of that is the reason there's two tiers in front of this same board. So are there other avenues to go through? Would there be a next level of appeal? Sure. But the very existence of the statutory scheme is to prevent people whose property is destroyed from having to go through that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? There's a motion for denial, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Flower Day.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I do believe this is an issue that needs to be decided by Turk or in the courts or with revision in the original language that was proposed by Senator Erdman. I don't believe this is the place for the remedy.
I do agree with you. I think that that's right. I don't think that that's something that needs to be decided at this level. Because it is, it definitely applies to the interpretation.
Seems pretty clear that the statute needs to be relooked at again.
Yeah.
Next item, item number five, are public hearings. First, we have motor vehicle tax exemption applications for the following. St. Thomas Aquinas Church, St. Peter Catholic Parish School, Sister of Christ the King, My Bridge Radio, Union College, and Cornerstone Christian.
Okay, I will open the public hearings on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Are there, is there anyone here to speak regarding any of the motor vehicle tax exemption Saying none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing.
I will move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemptions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is for action on 6A. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Flower Day.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next public hearing is on 2020 451 Tax Exemption Application from CenterPoint, Inc. If you would so oblige, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'll do my part and then Dan will have something to contribute here. This is a, first of all, our office is recommending approval of the exemption application for CenterPoint. This is an item that was inadvertently omitted from the list that our office provided to the clerk's office when we considered all the other late, late in the year exemptions, I'll call them, where they can apply up to July 1. We brought that whole batch to the board two weeks ago, considered those, and this one just was inadvertently omitted from the list that we provided to the clerk. Thus, it didn't get noticed to the taxpayer to be able to present their situation two weeks ago. Subsequent to that, we realized what's happened, worked with Jennifer and Dan and County Attorney's Office. Our recommendation is for approval. Dan can, the statute limits these to be decided by the board by August 15. So that's the fly in the ointment. Our recommendation, under the circumstance, is still to recommend the board approve this due to the administrative mix-up in our office.
There is counsel for CenterPoint here. If I could just have him come forward, and I had a chance to speak with him prior to...
And we want to swear you in, since it's a public hearing.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a chance to speak with counsel for CenterPoint prior to this meeting today. I explained to him that we don't have a problem necessarily with the exemption of how it's being used. The problem has to be considered by August 15. August 15 fell on Saturday. I think you can maybe make an argument to extend it to Monday. But by the time this omission was discovered, we ran into too many problems of trying to get it published and get it set. I explained to him that unfortunately, my recommendation to you, as is your legal counsel, is to deny it, allow them to appeal it to Turk, and then we'll just go ahead and confess that the exemption should have been granted at that point. It makes it the cleanest legally. There's an appeal taken from this and it is granted here, as it gets to be more messy in front of Turk. I know it's kind of an extra step and I apologize to him for our, you know, the oversight, but it just makes it the cleanest way to do it.
So we have the county attorney recommending denial and the county assessor recommending approval. I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
All right, Tom.
100% not on the same page here.
We're recommending approval based on the merits of the...
I get it. I get it. Yeah.
If you would, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, members of the commission. My name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street. Several of you were on the board two years ago when we negotiated for the purchase of what we're calling the South Street Project, the Traybert Hall at 11th and South Street. CenterPoint took title in January of 2019. You may recall that under our purchase agreement, we negotiated, really restricted all the uses to the exempt uses and gave CenterPoint two years in which to line up financing. I'm here to tell you, I'm really optimistic that's gonna happen. We've had very good success in seeking the variety of different funding sources we need to make this happen. We're working with NIFA right now to get an allocation of low-income housing tax credits to convert the third and fourth floor into housing and working with other funding sources to really convert first and second floor into the clinical and medical uses. But since that point, CenterPoint has used the property only for, to support its nonprofit uses. So I've learned to take yes for an answer. When I hear a recommendation of yes for the exemption, I'm accepting of that. And the appeal to Turk to get us there, I agree statutorily. I don't think this body has jurisdiction at this point to approve it. I think we have to move forward and handle the appeal. And I can work with the county attorney's office to get that handled and I don't think it's gonna be onerous at all, so I'm accepting of that solution.
So the applicant is also recommending denial. Just want us to be clear on this.
I didn't...
No, I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
I didn't arrive here with that intention, but if you don't have jurisdiction, you don't have jurisdiction.
I will...
Keeping score at home.
Okay.
I move that we deny the application.
Yeah, hold on.
Oh, public hearings. Sorry.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this matter?